All right. I Samantha Spalding, President, call this work session to order under the Open Public Meetings Act that six oh six P M. This is to advise the general public and instruct that it be recorded in the minutes that in compliance with chapter two three one of the public laws of nineteen seventy five entitled the Open Public Meetings Act. The Running Board of Education calls to be posted at Lurk Hall, Running Post Office, Maryville School, Alliance Bingham School, and Very Standing School, and advertise in retrospect a meeting notice that forth the time, date, and location of this meeting. Roll call board members.
Okay. Angel Beebe, here. Charles Buckline.
President.
Naomi Davidson, here. Noted Patricia Dare is absent, Maria Panterelli, Panterola is absent. Patricia Smith, here. Samantha Spalding.
Here.
Lynch Rolo, here. And John Wood, Depp.
So, on here we have a reminder that the two thousand and thirteen workshop and exhibition is to be held October twenty second to the twenty fourth at Atlantic City Convention Center, and hotel reservations are at Trump Plaza Hotel and Casino, the same as last year. Everybody responded to you who was going to be there and.
I didn't respond, so I'm the only, I guess I'm the only one.
Probably, yeah, because you were.
I was the only one. Yes, I have many things to go.
Okay.
Because I did the group, I did the group registration as far as being able to attend any of the workshops at all, because at that point we had the minimum in order to, because they have a flat fee once, and once you have this many people that you're registering, you might as well register your whole group.
Okay.
So that's what I did. So I put in everybody's name for the registration to attend the conference. But for hotel reservations, if you wanted to stay, let me know, because I already, I submitted that too, so we could get room.
There's those dates again?
The twenty second to the twenty fourth.
Thank you.
Did you put my name in there?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, I'll have to, I'll have to check with the whole phone. I should be able to do this, but we're still watching. I can let you know tomorrow.
Oh, this is fine.
Yeah. You can put me down, so.
I did.
I did.
Okay.
I'm looking over here.
I'm definitely, I'm definitely going, whether I'm staying or not.
Right.
Next on the agenda is the Rod Grant application deadline. We have an ad hoc committee meeting at five o'clock where Patty, Chaz, and I met with Joanne and Mark and Butch to talk about what Garrison Architects had put together, and there's extra copies in front of all of you, to put together for the Rod Grant. And what we really met for was to see if we, you know, were okay with everything in there. Quite frankly, almost everything in there is a level one priority, which is the most critical for school facilities. And so we told, we thought that we would go ahead and put everything in and let them come back and see what they said. We thought that that would be the best thing to do, because Joanne spoke to Garrison Architects today, and they said you cannot add, but you can delete things. So if you put everything in and you don't do it all, that's one thing, but you can't set, put something in and then say, oh, and we want to do this. And the reason why we got together this evening was because you'll see that that September fourth deadline is rapidly, is coming up quickly, and as Joanne pointed out to us before, the application is very intense. So we need to, Joanne just wanted to make sure that we were all on board. So I see all of you ladies who weren't here are kind of shaking, you know, so you cannot, you cannot add, but you can always delete. So some of this stuff, like we had, we had a couple of questions, like I had a couple of questions, and, you know, it's like the pointing and new windows and a roof and different things, you know.
The new kitchen.
The new kitchen, the new warming kitchen that would be in Downing, all this stuff that we, it's not, nothing's new on that list. It's stuff that we need, and now that there is going to be, you know, money, we need to try and take advantage of that.
Okay, now what is the, I mean, definitely there's a timeline, a deadline for the grant application itself, then what is the timeline, what's that application goes in to hear whether funds.
Realistically, they're saying that we probably will not get the official approvals on, you know, what the grant would be and the amounts until probably December, which is, it might take that long, so that they go through the pile, because, you know, they're all, all the ones that are submitted by the deadline and.
So once, once approval comes through, then when are the funds allocated to the district for work to begin?
Well, we have to confirm within eighteen months that we have the local share of the amount. So we have up to eighteen months to secure the local funding, which you'll notice like in our reserves, that's what I've been doing, putting the money in there, so we're not, we don't have to go out to bond referendum, we actually have it in our reserves and we can utilize that, so.
Good. I just, I just had one of the lunch, I talked to her today, she asked me what was going on with the kitchen situation, so I said, oh, I don't know, it's, you know, things have been sort of on hold, so we haven't heard anything, but I said, I have four things, I will find out, here it is, so.
Well, what we talked about last meeting, and that's my fault for not updating you, was why not put a hold on it and see if we can't get it paid, like, you know, what's the percentage?
It'll be close to fifty percent.
Close to fifty percent funded, I mean, for the taxpayers and for, you know, for the, you know, it's not, I mean, obviously we want to get out of the red there, and it's a necessity, but something that we've done without for so long, what would be one more school year, and that's why Joanne had went ahead. Remember we questioned during May, like, why are you, why are we approving this Nutriserve agreement when we're going, and that was our backup plan, you know, I mean, like, we did that, there was a reasoning for that, so.
To look at the big picture, right?
Yes, where we think probably a month to month, you know.
That's the way we think.
Hi, John.
Hello.
There's a new Rod Grants coming out, that's where we're at on the, and so we're going to put in for all of this and hopefully get approved, because it's all level one.
Men.
And new windows, new pointing, new windows. We're going to put everything in and see if we can't get it paid half a half.
I saw that, like fifty three percent.
Yeah, right around there. So there's.
Fifty five point three percent.
So these went away and they came back, so we're rushing to get it, our application in.
Where do I sign?
Yeah, that's what, that's what I, I told you we would all be in agreeance with that. Does anyone have any other questions? Take your time and look at, at that, but most of it, like I said, is falls in level one, so.
Can you just go over real quickly how the funding works for, who pays, how much is paid for by who, by what?
Well, the Garrison estimate on there is close to around the fifty percent.
Right, I see that, it says architects estimate is fifty five point three thirty three percent.
Do you want to know what's the best, excuse me, that's a pile of, can you turn to page twelve real quick, the last page, are you there, or if everyone could?
Page twelve, I got it.
That's like total, and then what the, they estimate that the state would pay, and then what we would pay, and that, we had an ad hoc committee meeting, and Chaz had already asked this question, like, okay, so where would this one point eight million come from? And it would come from capital reserves, and right now we're at about.
Over a million.
Well, it's over a million, right?
So with, we would have eighteen, we would have eighteen months to come up with a little bit more.
What about the bond, right, was our debt service, was that not done?
We paid off the bonds.
So will we go for another one, does that make sense or not?
To go for another bond referendum?
Not bond.
We weren't, we weren't proposing to go for another bond referendum on that, because we can actually get, in my opinion, we should be able to have enough of the local share in our reserves to be able to fund our portion of it if we're going to go for the grants. Otherwise, you'd have to do the whole process of going for a bond referendum.
Bond referendum?
And in this way, there's no additional tax on it.
Right, that's true.
And that, and that, and this, and this saying means that's extremely important, and Joanne's been trying to make sure that we're.
Especially if you want to keep moving, because you never know with a bond referendum if it's going to pass or not, and you can't count your chickens before they hatch.
And you have to guarantee the money in eighteen months that you have your share.
But we're all, we're already seventy five percent of the way there, if not more, so.
And should, you know, as we get further along in this and we get approvals or whatnot, as, as said, we could always not do any of the things that are in there, but you just can't add it later, as a fact. So that number could be less.
Right, if we don't come up with one, we should not go to the.
Yeah, I mean, since you know.
Exactly, exactly. That's why we said go for everything.
Gotcha.
And then we'll make a priority list, you know.
Right, it's also good PR proposal here to know, to let the voters know, the taxpayers know that we're hopefully going to be able to do this without.
Without impacting you at all.
You know, I know we said we were going to be working on our homepage, and maybe if we're fortunate, hopefully we get this grant money or a good portion of it, we can put something out, a message out for people to read that, look at the improvements we're going to make at all three schools without raising your taxes one head. That would be big, especially for our colleagues that are running for reelection this coming year, would be a wonderful thing to have.
Any other questions on the Rod Grant? If not, we were going to just look over our agenda. Very, we'll go through the agenda. So our reports are attached. We'll start with new business on page four. And under property and transportation, there is use of facilities. Re adopting the same hazardous conditions, there shouldn't be any issues with that this year, correct? Everybody knows that.
All right, now was there a reason why we didn't get any bits from Holcomb and T N L?
They chose not to, they chose not to respond.
And, I mean, that's okay from our legal perspective, we only have one.
Yeah, because we have proof that we provided the information, and then they chose not to, in fact, some of them put down, or, or, or contacted them, and they said, no, we're not going to respond, so she makes it, so we have her back up.
Four and five are the Rod Grants, and Joanne just had them separated, one for the kitchen project and one for everything else. New fire doors, new fire alarm control panel. Any questions there, property and transportation?
I just, how is the fire alarm door panels, how's that work? Is it centralized in the office?
How does that go? For, when the alarm goes off, it will release the doors, so that, because otherwise we'll be able to hold the fire doors back on magnets, so the easy access between all of the.
Okay, so it's just a magnetic contact?
Yes, it works by magnet, and it will be controlled by the fire alarm.
Is that controlled at the office, or is it controlled, where is the main control port occur?
Where is the fire alarm box?
Here, it's in the main, right outside the maintenance.
So it's more in the maintenance area of the building rather than.
But there should be a release, my understanding, there's a release too for, for the doors at least, will be one in the office as well.
Doesn't it automatically release if the fire alarm goes off?
Exactly.
It's automatically.
Yeah, I, I get that.
My question is where is this control panel going to be installed?
It's where the rest of it, it's actually.
Basically where the ma, all the major control panels are used.
Yeah.
Any other questions on their property or transportation? This summer, and you know, in the spring, we, our administrative team has been very busy on their, the next area, personnel. So there's quite a few items there. Does anybody have any questions, items number one? There was twelve to nineteen were added, so you might want to take a minute to look at that.
For number ten?
She was originally put on the guide for masters, forty nine one, and it was discovered that she had the masters plus thirty, so that would actually put her masters plus fifteen, so that would be the increase for that.
So this is a salary adjusted for.
Where's the list? Or the.
We don't have a miserable.
I guess, my concern is like, was that, was that something that slipped through cracks that we didn't know that she had her thirty, or did she get that over summer?
No, she had it before. So if it slipped through cracks, cracks would be a good term for that.
Um, for number fourteen, extracurriculars, um, is it, my understanding to be correct that these would be tied into the contract? So I think we, as a board, need to make sure that contractually the prices that go along with these.
Well, it says here stipends will remain there until you, until the new contract.
Right, okay.
So that's what saves us there, because we need to have these people in place.
The way that I had requested that we re, or reexamine these stipends, because there's some people that are coming in here as a first year coach or advisor that are getting the amounts of money that.
And that's, and that was one of the things I would talk about that, is because I'd like to create like a sour, almost a sour guy, because when you have somebody who comes in with no experience coaching, or no experience, and they would be different than the coach who might have done it for five, six, seven years.
Is this part of the.
We could create.
The rates with the new contract that you're.
That would all have to be negotiated.
We have to negotiate that, I just wanted the board to know that that's something we, in the contract. But is it part of these negotiations, or is, are these coaches that are grandfathered into the current stipends that are being dealt down to coaches and advisors at this point in time?
My only response to that would be is because we don't have a new contract, everything's frozen at what our current rates are. So unless the board would like to, in their next meeting, consider a change in these, that could be part of.
Right, I mean, we don't.
Hasn't been any conversation about that, restructuring of that?
Well, if, if I recollect, I don't know when the, since I'm retired, this has become part of the negotiations process, that advisors and coaches stipends were not part of the bargaining unit.
Okay.
So they're like a separate thing that goes on, so you, you really have, we're going to formulate whatever.
Well, I also think I was talking to my other about, is I'd like to kind of move some of the money for some of the different things, because some of the, some of the activities, it's not balanced, like, you know, say, I'm not, I can't use specific, but I just, this doesn't, let's say, honor society and student council, they might be doing similar type of jobs, but they're five, six, seven hundred dollars difference in what the stipends is. And so, you know, some of the people don't, you know, a little animosity there, you know, for that, and I kind of agree with them, and I agree with the same thing as, you know.
I also think we, we need to reexamine assistants, assistant coaches, assistant advisors, because if you get a massive group of children that are being supervised by one person, you know, you're setting yourself up for all kinds of problems.
It's also discourages some kids from coming in, for instance, in basketball, you know, practice with five kids at a time, you know, your plays are doing something, and what are you doing to the other ten, eleven kids? You know, they're sitting out and doing something or whatever, or there's always, and they're not going to even practice, I mean.
Also, another thing, like if there's a male coach coaching a female.
Squad.
Or a male advisor, a female advisor, you know, that, that can be a little hairy sometimes too, so I just think it's important to reexamine, and I'm glad to hear that you have that in mind, thanks.
How about if we do this, on that, I'm going to add at the end there, where it says stipends remain at twelve thirteen rate depending on new contract and board discretion, because on a lot of these things, it's the board's discretion for, you know, the position and the.
Why don't we give Mr. Iñárrez some time to.
Right, absolutely.
It won't take you much time.
Actually, what we need to do before we close out this, is we need to come up with a date in the, in the next couple of weeks to have our special meeting to do, hold our board retreat, which Mr. Iñárrez doesn't want to call board retreat, I know why, you have to ask him, to come up with our board goals and go over some data and things, so we will have another meeting prior to the start of the school year, so we could also revisit this as well.
Suggestion, I believe in our retreat, the superintendent tells us what his or her goals are for the year, that maybe could be one of your goals, that by a certain date, I will reformulate or restructure this particular guide for coaches and advisors.
But they would have to, that would have to be negotiations.
It's not negotiation, it's not part of the bargaining.
Oh, it's not, okay.
Unless, unless, within the last contract or so, that has to come, but I don't think so.
There are issues in there where they're trying to get assistance in there.
We need to, well, as part of negotiations, we'll. Exactly.
Okay.
We need some time to work on that. But it's not part of negotiations right now, so.
No, it is.
No, it is now, that they're trying to get.
They're looking for.
Coaches and advisors into the bargaining unit. Okay, we can't discuss.
We can't discuss it, but, so, no.
We need to work on that.
We're working on it.
All right, thanks.
Okay. Any other questions there on their personnel? Then how about finance? Finance, there is, our administrative team looks like they're going to be busy with professional development, and paying some bills.
Lots of.
We added eleven to fifteen, or, excuse me, sixteen and seventeen on the back, so you may want to take a look at them closely.
What is this nursing, twelve thousand one ninety? But then on public, that's the state allocation for that. That's allocated to state choices.
Any questions?
I have a question, number, I guess it's fourteen, under, what is this, finance?
Okay.
This E I R C for delivery of products and services, what exactly is that?
If we decide to utilize that, E I R C has a whole menu item of products that you could possibly purchase from them, or services, and some of it might have to do with, it could do with professional development, or it could do with technology, they, they have the ability to use their resources to offer these things, and you sign it with agreement with them, they're actually utilizing the, what do I want to say, economies of scale, and it, and it meets all the state requirements for purchasing, you know, at the lowest cost.
Much.
We use that.
Yeah, we use that. Yeah, we usually use it every year, so it's just more or less a renewal of what we're doing.
Okay, so it's just renewing, but there's no set rate?
No, no, there's a rate. You may, you may not use that.
Right, I mean, there's just. There's not even any set rate if we do decide to use.
No, because it depends on what you've decided to select to get forward.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? You'll see under curriculum that Dr. McCarron has been busy, and there's a curriculum renewal plan, summary parental involvement policy, extracurricular activities and coaches.
Can we just clarify case number six? It's like obviously more of a request to eliminate and establish, especially as a case for others.
Man, what's that? Should we be here explaining that thing? All right, can I get it together if you'd like to zip? That's for one of the classes, one of the M D classes, I believe, here at Volts.
So we're dropping a program here and do then letting a new one.
Yeah, it has to be, it has to be approved by the county.
Okay, go ahead.
Probably due to the needs of the students, you know, there's different needs, for a few years there, we didn't have the needs that we're now seeing again.
Gotcha.
If I, if I had to guess, knowing what I've known, that being my area of.
One, notational, items one and two, you need to add five in front of your year, because when you look at the backup, it's a five year plan, so add that to your agenda. Five year plan, five year plan?
Yeah.
Under two are five year plans.
These two are the five year.
Just going to pick a five year.
Over two under what?
One and two under curriculum.
Curriculum.
Training, state development, research.
Is there any questions?
If I could go back, I have a question.
Yeah, you absolutely can go back, as long as you're.
Okay, I've been reading Mark's update and also Butch's proposal for a new custodian eye, I, I mean, I know it's kind of backing up into the past, but with Butch's proposal for a new custodian, which I'm okay with, my question is, this state code with the square footage, and we're supposed to be employing eight point two custodians, and we only have six full and one part time at this point in time, if I recollect, weren't we told about three or four years ago that we had to cut back on our custodial staff because of state regulations?
Was this in research, any research, they did the calculations incorrectly?
Because we were told, you're correct.
Oh, I know.
I don't think they went, oh, did we consider, like, the second, third, fourth thing, like, I don't think that's what this, this reasoning.
I see, okay. But I, my, and I, I still question why a building is not under custodial care before eleven o'clock in the morning?
That's going to change.
That's part of the.
I, I know that, but again, I mean, I know my mindset is, yeah, I'm talking in the past here, but we will have custodial staff in all three buildings now when the building's open, and they will remain there through the day? Okay, thank you. Good. Hallelujah.
That is good, and that was my, Mark had called me in and asked, you know, and let me know about this, and I had said, wait a minute, wait a minute, same thing you said, they told us three years ago, we had to let go of one, let go of one, we were three, or something like three over or something like that, they wanted to cut people, they wanted to privatize, remember all that? So, no, so Butch must have looked into it and found that.
Good.
Yeah.
Thank you, Butch.
Any other questions on the agenda? No? All right, so then, oh, let's talk about a date before we, so we can post that as. I got to check my calendar first.
For the board retreat.
For the board retreat, that we're not calling for a retreat.
It's the word retreat.
And he doesn't like the word retreat.
You're going somewhere.
It can't.
Yeah, like Turtle Beach or something, you know.
Well, I mean, you know.
Well, last year it was going to be.
It is going to be in the morning, I would like, who, John, do you guys have your, John and Angel?
If it's soon, we're good, like in the next two weeks.
Slowly.
Okay.
So then you're good.
Yeah, I'm out right now.
That's right. How about you, what's your schedule looking like?
The next two weeks, I work midnight, so for the next two weeks, so I work from five P M. to five A M. starting Monday, five fifteen A M. So. It would have to, would have to follow along with my dates all, so we have to pick a date, and I'll see where I can put that.
How about the twenty eighth, Wednesday?
Oh, September.
No.
Could I, can I just say something, that this is no, no, nothing against you, John, but he's not running for reelection, like.
That doesn't matter, he's still, yeah, well, I would like it to be a full board, he's here until January.
I was just wondering how that worked, so it's still January?
Yeah, he's on our board.
I'm sorry, I wasn't sure, okay.
So, he should be, he should be, if, if, well, I would like to do everything possible to have him here to help make for our goals, absolutely.
I wasn't sure when the, when his term was.
What time will it be on Wednesday?
Nine A M.
Would it be better earlier, because you're. Would it be better earlier, because you're?
No, because I, I get done at five A M.
So do you want us to do it at eleven A M?
Okay.
So you get some sleep?
Well, I'll do it at noon if you want.
No, eleven's good.
Are you, is everybody okay with that?
Oh, the twenty-eighth?
At eleven A M?
Oh, good.
I'm gonna actually text her as soon as I get out of the work session. Yes, we'll have brunch. Board retreat at eleven. So get that advertised, that will be here. And we'll probably be here till, till one or two. Yeah. If there's not any questions, will I will? Need a motion to adjourn the work session?
I'll make that motion.
Permission by Chaz. Seconded by Naomi, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so we can adjourn.